Okay, I want to do the call of order before we get into this committee's agendas. We have two presentations first by Bill Winkler on property allocation. Bill?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm sure the council has been approached and know what Gary's questions are for the demo program, especially the finance side. He will be talking to people again this week, I think it was when, when he lands at nine o'clock tonight, so it's like nine thirty, my colleague. But he asked me with Eric Schilling to just let you know what the demo program is and what we're planning to do if we get the money. And I'm sure everyone's aware of how many houses that we have in the city, you know, in the horrible state of repair. So Eric had put together a list of potential candidates that was in excess of one hundred and five?
Hundred and twelve.
And what we wanted to do with that, and that's city-owned and privately owned, and what we wanted to do is somehow put those in priority order. So Eric and his folks went back out and put them into three major categories. Categories of severely deficient, moderately, and then minor. And I think they were fairly evenly broken down too, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And what we wanted to do is identify the ones that are in the first zone as the worst and focus on whether or not they were safe. So we went, Eric and I went back out and went to all the ones that were in the first zone and looked at the city-owned and the privately owned, and we came up with twenty-one. And they're up on the board there as we circle them so that you can see them. And we want, we consider these unsafe, meaning unsafe structures, that the house could fall on someone having a sidewalk, it could fall on somebody in the street, or in a lesser sense, part of the house could fall down on someone in the lane inside the house. And we determined that these houses, we did not want anybody to go in. No police officer, we didn't have a fire department, no person. Especially when we realized we have to go in there and do evaluations for asbestos and this pain and that. We didn't want anybody in there because the floor wasn't substantial enough just by visual. So we've identified these twenty-one, we want this to be the first phase of our demo projects. And from there, we can go a variety of different ways. We have the remainders of the candidates within that zone, and I don't remember the exact numbers now, but we have the remainder of those candidates and all the ones in the twos and threes. We can package those into ownership classifications or any way we want, because those demos are going to require investigation as far as asbestos and blood-based pain. So this is what we're trying to do with the whole program. We're going to take the worst first and then ease into it. And that's going to take some time to do all investigations, get clearances on the houses that we don't own now. Our corporation council is looking for ways of going after the privately-owned property so that when we do take it down, we aren't putting it down because we're out to that. It's their responsibility. So in a nutshell, everybody I'm sure realizes if you take a house down, it helps the street, the neighborhoods, and the community immensely. And it's also going to allow us to have a vacant lot, some of which can be built on, some of which can't be built on because the lots are too small. But then they could be divided or combined with neighbors. And Eric, can I, one of these? Pass this around. These are, we've got pictures. And matter of fact, the one that's in the leaf of the binder here is Stuvend that burned last night. It's, this is a picture before it burned. And it's on the ground now. We took it down today. The rest of these are the twenty-one that are shown up on the map by ownership. The first group is the ones we own, the second group is the ones that are privately owned, and the third and the fourth ones are the remaining part of Zone One. So if you pass this around, you can take a look at it. If you think we don't have any problems in the city of the houses, this will be a surprise to you.
Yeah. I think it'll be a surprise to me. Does anyone have any questions for Bill? We're not voting on this tonight. We're going to talk about the financial piece of that. Who will be able to do that?
But Gary is looking to do a package through the tier management. We think that there's good chances we're going to be able to deal with all of the weeks, most of the weeks, one hundred and twelve with that amount of money. The house on Yulet Street came in sixteen grand for Yulet?
Two of sixteen thousand four hundred.
And the one that burned last night in Stuvend was twenty-one thousand. So we think we're going to be able to deal with the lines shared in the room and the binder and Zone Two and Zone Three, the three millions. I know it's a lot of money, but we have a lot of houses in tough shape. So I just wanted to give you that introduction. Gary's going to be talking to the council about finances, and that's what it's about.
Do you have any questions? I do have one question. So you developed the criteria, how you came, how they fit in category, where obviously this is very clear, the first twenty-one?
We've developed the criteria, but it's not aligned in some ways. You know, Eric and I go out with our experience and our judgments and, you know, decide these should be in Zone One, these should be in Zone Two. The ones that are close could probably be split apart. We didn't push our way into any of these houses, the twenty-one, because we were concerned about the building. But as you got down, we went into a lot of the houses and determined what was sound and what wasn't sound. And I can't give you a formula. It's just our experience and judgment. They're all in, they're all in tough shape.
There are certain factors that give automatic criterias. If Bill and I can speak to it regarding structure, certain components of structures, foundations, roof systems, assemblies, that automatic, you know, put automatic strikes, but there is, there is a fair amount of discretion that needs to be used just based on experience and construction knowledge. But there are some telltale signs, as you can see in the photos that are being passed around, that make the, make the decisions a lot easier on some structures, a little more difficult when we get in and have to investigate a little deeper to make our criteria just, you know, just, you know, make it clear as to what category it's going to fall into. But make no, you know, there will be no improvement of these or improvement of these structures over time. You know, they're already in this list, they're not going to do anything but deteriorate.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. And then we'll turn to Mr. Schilling for an update on the code enforcement activities.
My activities are extremely busy.
My bad.
I'll pass this around. I apologize, I meant to give this to you throughout the day or even earlier, but we were quite busy, two demolitions today. I don't have much of a chance, but I'll walk you through what I offered and what I accepted was the opportunity to quarterly look. We were apartment did expand and there was discussions to, you know, expenses throughout the city, so I'm preempting speed on a quarterly report, given our activities and our expenses. What we have in the columns here are the first quarter of 2012 next to the first quarter of 2013. The 2013 budget adopted as whole and a percentage thereof. So that percentage, we're looking at, those numbers should be around twenty-five percent being the first quarter of the year. As you can see, there's some numbers that stick out in both directions. The admin fees at fifty-five percent. A lot of those, a lot of these are sort of out of control. We have to take these in as projects come to us and, you know, so understanding that, you know, we can budget for certain things, but, you know, so we're tracking a lot of administration fees, licenses, right at quarter of our projections. Distribute occupancy. I have some footnotes next to some of these numbers so that you can get some, some memos toward them. That number, and I didn't realize until I took it back, I took that to bribe it seventeen thousand dollars and change last year. I diminished the 2012 budget by ten percent, not having much history behind us. And then when we started tracking this, I did some more investigating, and I found out that the 2012 number was about a sale of building 2011. It was a very large, large apartment building that exchanged hands and that needed all of its tendencies to be reserved. I created a large number, so that number was just a carryover from 2012. When I carried it over, we will be looking closer at these as we move forward and certainly, you know, my fault for digging deeper at the time. But again, not being a large item of budget, this total budget at seventeen thousand dollars, you know, we may still come close at nine percent now. The vacant building registration, I just wanted to make note that traveling at thirty-six percent, we, of our budget, which was way over the projections for 2012 and years previous, there's, but it's not as active as I'd like it to be. Haith Ashley, who was solely dedicated to this program, has been moved up to a code enforcement officer, so she's kind of sharing time with this program, training somebody on this program. Person's being trained on this program wasn't hired until March fourth, and several weeks of training, getting more speed with vehicles and things. So there's a lot of transition that happened in the first quarter, but still it's a great tracking number at thirty-six. The rental registration certificates at fourteen percent. We have two footnotes here. The 2013 budget, if you look at revenue lineups associated with rental registration certificates, the lineups is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe. And what that reflects was the original discussions of the rental program, rental certificate program in full, one hundred percent compliance. And at that time, that was a number that we were bringing to the surface to say, you know, how far out of compliance we were as a city. I offered in my budget, one housing officer to head up the rental program, then one officer I anticipated was going to generate two hundred thousand dollars. So the four hundred really shouldn't have been there, the two hundred should have been there because we only asked for one officer. I explained at the time to realize the four hundred and some thousand dollars, I would have needed two officers, maybe two and a half, in full dedication for that. So we'll make those corrections moving forward, and hopefully they'll exceed the two hundred thousand this year. At fourteen percent, still encouraging because again, the general that's in charge of this program wasn't hired until March fourth, he wasn't trained fully, he didn't get his vehicle until April first. So, you know, we limped along a little bit out with our internal resources, and at fourteen percent, I'm still pleased with that number. I anticipated that decline and get right back into the balance. Building permits, as you look at first quarter from twelve to thirteen, a huge discrepancy. Again, we had a couple of very large projects with General Electric and some other commercial projects coming in the first quarter last year, we didn't realize this year. That's really out of our control when people decide to build large projects, get approval moving forward. You know, we'd like to think that the number of two hundred forty-eight thousand tracks historically from years past, up to five years I looked at to make sure that the percentage increases or anything, there was a lot of that, really didn't have a spike. And again, I apologize for that. Our revenues then at the two hundred ninety-nine versus first quarter twelve versus first quarter thirteen, down to one eighty-seven, is reflected mostly in that, that building permit line. Our total budget adoption for revenues is eight hundred twenty-six thousand this year, which tracks at twenty-three percent, given the, kind of this whole start, but a couple of those programs, I'm confident we're going to be, you know, by mid-year one, be looking either on track or probably better. The general payroll, twenty-seven thousand, tracked as an adoption of, our total payroll at twenty-two percent. I don't think there's a significant savings in there based on operation, and I'll be honest about that. I think it's that we didn't get our hires really on board and on the payroll until, you know, almost halfway through the first quarter. But I don't anticipate, you know, that exceeding, I just kind of track very closely over time, our schedules and things like that, so I don't think, I think we're right on course. I think of the items that we're in front of, you know, continuing to stay in front of. The ones that are lagging behind these programs are now fully up to speed. I think there's been some news that read in the papers, that our first minimum registration lines that went out, our second waivers went out, and we're starting to follow and the footy tracking on us.
Questions for Mr. Schelling? Thank you. Do you want to talk to me about the sweeps that we're doing?
Sure. We're starting our NCCRs, which are neighborhood code compliance reviews, start this month in May. Our first one is May fourteenth in Mont Pleasant area. We have done a lot of reconnaissance in the area regarding the city-owned properties and the maintenance requirements and the things of our own properties, our work orders out, trying to clean those things up. I know Mont Pleasant was, and we chose it for the fourteenth because there was a lot of activity in Mont Pleasant going on. I, this past weekend, made a big cleanup project that went extremely well. I know the fire department, police department were involved, OCS was involved, girl's office, there's a lot, a lot of city involvement there. There also have a retreat program going on this month. We're going to have our code compliance group coming through with all our courtesy notices. We expanded that group to now include animal control. We also have Habitat Semperity walking with us. Our Habitat approached me, we had a couple of meetings, and a lot of our courtesy, anyone want to know what they were? A lot of them are exterior because we're used to walk through the neighborhood, we're actually not knocking on doors and doing internal sweeps. So a lot of those notices are generated by, you know, deteriorated porch, painted paints, things along those lines. Those are things that he expressed to me he had resources for, so he'd like to walk with us. And as we're approaching a home, he might be able to knock and leave a note and say, what they're pointing out is something that we can handle. So we might be able to have a solution right at hand. And I'm not sure what their criteria determinations are, but he does, either himself or someone from Habitat will be with us. So kind of expanded our group to encompass more and more of the resources and questions and problems throughout the city.
I think that's great that you can make an impact on the neighborhood.
Yeah, I would hope so. It seems like we're handling everything. We've been working with Marion, some Septed training follow-ups that we've done, and we'll certainly have a lot of that in our visions as we move through the neighborhoods, and that was crime prevention through environmental design. So as we're making suggestions to landscape changes and retaining walls and certain things, we'll be looking at those from a Septed view, or, you know, taking out blind spots and working with, you know, traffic safety and corners and things like that. So there's a lot that we've incorporated in these NCCRs this year.
Thank you very much. And I should mention Ms. Peraza was working tonight, so she was not here during that special event practice in the capera.
A follow order finance committee. Repent, up, the 2013 budget reappropriation, dog shelter.
All right. Good afternoon, or I should say good evening. Oh, thank you.
So what you have before you is a budget reappropriation that deals with stacking the animal kennel that the city is coming very close to concluding its construction. Right now, the police department has the capability to temporarily shelter about five dogs at a time. And caring for those dogs at their house at the police department requires maintenance staff and existing animal control officers to take on additional duties. As planned for, considered in the 2013 budget, the city is moving forward with constructing its own animal kennel. It's going to be located out near the city's water treatment plant, and it will hold up to fourteen animals. I believe that we anticipate that that will be up and running June one or around that timeframe. So to appropriately stack the facilities, it's moving from the police department over to that area, it's been determined that we require two part-time animal control officers. It's proposed that each of those officers will be compensated at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour and that in aggregate, they will not exceed thirty hours per week. There's no change required in revenue for this, and it's a net zero change between the control of animal fee for service, which is used to pay for sheltering dogs at other facilities and other related expenses. There's sufficient savings in there that we'll be able to pay for these officers for 2013. And then when we adapt and construct our 2014 budget, we'll take into account the operation of the animal, of kennel itself, which is anticipated to actually be a savings for the city as we will be housing more animals ourselves than paying for outside facilities to do so.
Any questions?
Do you have any idea what these part-time hours are going to be? It seems to me that a lot of the animals that are picked up and brought to the police station, which I thought they were in human labor because it recited at one point, but that must have been different. I'm not, I'm not able to decide in a specific receiver, might be able to, but I think that the thought is to have these people be available when there's a dog that needs to be taken in as well as we have to take care of feeding and cleaning, right? And that's.
I'm just wondering if there were some kind of stats? Are you seeing them more weekly? You know, when are they coming in that they're not going to be the ends where we have a contract with, or, I believe Fulton Montgomery, we had something up there.
We're hoping there's flexibility with the people we hire, and that's what we're looking after, some flexibility in their hours.
There has to be.
A lot of, a lot of, it's not going to be set hours. We're not, we're not after that. We're after the flexibility. It's a part-time fifteen was, like she said, that's thirty hours of a month.
Thirty hours would be between the two, so it'd be, it'll be really a very loading type of.
Yeah. There's certain days off that obviously the regular ACOs have. The regular ACOs when they're on duty will obviously be, you know, attending to this business. Outside of that, there's some weekend coverage, some holiday coverage. That's what we'll have to get the flexibility of part timers. As far as housing the dogs, I think the department, we've been working with Ag markets, in fact, we have inspection on the fourteen, I believe. And as far as I'm aware, very satisfied with what we've done over there. You know, we have some different cages within our salary for it, but it is a major increase for us to have these cages there.
It's not a great place.
No, no. And two cars, we will make some good progress ourselves over here last week, and it's all getting painted by the middle end this week, we painted, and the cages, the cell, all the concrete's already, you know, plated all virtually and stuff like that, so.
So who will supervise these individuals?
They'll still follow their patrol sergeants and ultimately assistant chief jack fellow.
And is anyone taking a look at statistically when these animals are coming in? Is there a certain time or?
There are busier times than not. You know, summertime hours just seems to be sometimes more, you know, outside, to get moved to the backyard or wherever they're rolling it more. But we've seen them on the streets though, you know, somebody taking five, six dollars in the day, all the time if we go five, six days without taking a dog.
All right, so you mentioned rent for eats, you might.
Yes. So that's why we're trying to build flexibility, the part-time positions are exactly that, flexibility.
Is there, is there the ability to build in flexibility for the full-time animal control officers?
It's contractual.
It is.
Yeah, they did follow the CSA contract, so it'd be, you know, follow that.
Is someone who's doing this, are they going to understand, I mean, animals need certain medical?
There'll be full training and stuff.
You're asking, you're asking about dogging.
We actually, we wrote the job description, description is similar to what our regular ACO job description is. There's obviously certain trainings that there is. There's some growing issues for the part-time versus stuff like that. More in training that will accommodate and get it done. I don't see too much of a lapse because there's not that much, it's just common sense, but others is there's laws they have to learn and so forth. So then we work with our full-time ACOs on a regular basis at first, and then we'll lean them off and get them involved in their own little duties. But we are making them that they can go pick up animals on their own if they need to be on a part-time basis. You know, so they'll be fully certified as an ACO, they're just working part-time with that.
Do they often have benefits in, in other classes?
No, there's, no, there's some fringe benefits, but for memo, it's definitely.
No health notes?
They are meant to be pretty important, so they do not have the ability to have medical health, healthcare benefits. They would get the fight get in Medicare, and if they wanted to, they could get retirement benefits, but that's usually very. For some, for this type of position, there would be, it certainly is a possibility that they would elect that, but usually somebody who's going to be working just a few hours could be in that position, but it certainly could be. And this, this budget reappropriation just deals to the actual expenses of the position without the fringe benefits because the way that we look at our benefits and the way that our health is upon this year, we have adequate capability to, if any of these people were to decide to take the retirement benefits to support that without making a change to the credentials at this point, I'm going to take a look at that.
What about staffing for this facility? Who's, I mean, who's obviously someone there? Is it the full-time ACOs, will they feed the animals?
We're actually building office, the second phase is, you know, to have an office right there that they can work out of, you know, it's kind of phase two of this whole project. But they don't have to buy a lot, they don't have to be on-premise, if you will. And we like the facility down there because someone has always had the water treatments plan, it's a little bit more of a controlled environment, so, you know, obviously the building will be secure, but it's, we don't have to have somewhere twenty-four seven, that's what I ask.
Right. Now, it's not really a mask, I'm asking who's going to be there, you know, feed the animals on a regular basis.
I hope the city house members will come down.
Oh, I think my assistant keeps some extra time.
No, it's, no, we're obviously going to go up to what legally we have to do and anything above that we can afford and do. You know, the facility's mirrored after we wanted to build a new facility, and I mean, as far as have a washer and dryer in there, so, you know, that we have to build blankets at certain times and certain, you know, things that we have to do for the animals, and we'll build a washing blanket right there.
Oh, so you will be washing blankets.
Yes.
We'll be volunteering.
When you're on your own.
Yeah.
You have a good job on your end as well, so.
Any other questions?
If we go over fourteen, what happens then?
If we go over 14, what happens then? If we go over...
If you said this will house 14 animals? Approximately 14, yes.
If so, for some reason, something happens and we...
We would then take that animal and put them in an area of shelter where we do, where we do now. But we expect that as we do that, we'll not be anywhere here where it is now because we only have a capability for approximately five animals.
They will be canceling our contracts with the other two.
They want to cancel that.
As on a needed basis.
Exactly, contracts are...
They're there, yeah, so, okay.
Hold the over fall.
Mm-hmm. What's that?
Any questions? Good, good.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're reappropriating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for Finance?
Okay, my turn.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'll call City Development planning order. First item is consolidated plan. I know I sent emails out to all of you in terms of the changes that we've discussed.
Thank you. Glad to go with the changes. We should have the amended 2013 proposed consolidated plan summary in your package. And hopefully, I've captured all of your wishes. If you turn to page three, which is actually the second page.
Yes, I don't, do people have that?
Yeah, I have that.
It was set.
The second package, which we didn't have.
Oh.
Sorry, if you turn to page three, it's actually the second page. And then under the third project, which is Say House, manager's counselor. This was reduced $3,751 to last year's level that was what he wanted. Last year's level of funding to $26,249. What I did was add, $1,250 was added to the Bethesda House projects, post projects, the first two projects listed, and the SCAP project listed, which is the last project on page three. So what we did, we took that $3,751 and divided it up between the two Bethesda House projects and the SCAP project. If you turn to page six, the third project, Connected Intercity Ministry Summer Lunch Program, took $3,000 from the community police to increase that to $5,000. And the next project below the Summer Lunch Program, the Connected County Youth Bureau, this is basically the pool programs. We added $19,260. And that was also taken from the community police program. And that leaves the community police program at $164,838. I should say that we're at our 15% cap in this category. And that means if you want to increase or delete any of these, it has to remain in this category. So that's the issue. I can't bring any money outside this category to increase this category because we're at our 15% cap. So if you turn to page eight, the third project down, Community Development Program Delivery. This is now put at last year's level, 2012 funding, and it was reduced by $4,800. And that $4,800 was put into the Street Mobility Rehabilitation Program activity. And lastly, if you turn to page 10, the third project down, Department of Development Housing Program Delivery, was placed back at 2012 level funding to $26,676. The difference, the $5,293 was put into Bethesda House's Rapid Housing Addiction Subsidy Funding for an increase to $41,131. And I should mention that the community loan fund funding, and I know that was discussed, will be part of the Section 108 loan guarantee application. We're going to be discussing it in May 20th of 2018.
Questions, comments? There's an email back and forth and just hopefully we got everybody's thoughts. No questions, I'll make the motion to approve this. Oh, okay, I'll second it, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dick and I had numerous meetings about this too. All right, number two then, zoning, 1502 Crane Street, the C2 mixed use commercial. Mr. Strickland?
My three items in a row here are, I guess, just the enactment of what was already called for public hearing and held at the last cycle. So I'm not sure if there's questions for me. 1502 Crane Street is the former Luther's Ice Cream, which we have a purchase contract for later down in the plains. They just changed it from mixed use to commercial. Fits in with the rest of zoning here.
Questions? Now, if I make a motion? I'll second it, all in favor? Aye. Zoning the 515 Kings Road?
Yeah, this is from...
Still is public hearing?
Sorry. It's from R1 to R3. A portion of it would remain R1 where there is an existing house. And the balance of it would change to R3 to allow for another apartment building. There's a bunch of apartment buildings in that area.
And I'll remember it's public hearing, so I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll second that, you all in favor? Aye. Abandoned the streets and were long preserved?
And we held public hearing, held the public hearing the last cycle. This is basically just the abandonment of all the streets, which had no utilities for infrastructure. They're served no properties. And it would be to make the little one preserve appear on the map to be one parcel. Or actually two parcels.
Okay, questions? Want to make a motion? Second, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
All right, State Park again, so can you give your waivers? First one. Harley, you want to talk to the park events with the open container waiver?
Yeah. You need extra help? Each year, we come to the council and ask for waivers for park events that are serving alcohol. I know that list has been... The Lobster Fest, the Oktoberfest, and the Irish Day. The Lobster Fest is for the Scampi Day Nursery. Oktoberfest, St. Joseph's Church. The Irish Day, the H R Government. These are its current chair. Pretty much about a hitch, they do a nice job and a lot of our experience we enjoy. Lobster Fest is excellent, I go over here. So we would ask that you would do a long session to help have the open container.
Any questions? Okay, let's break it, ready to move it? And I'll second it, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the next one is the Van Dyke event.
The Van Dyke bombers and correctives are all basically in the same, same ballpark. Yeah, these are two events that come all together and cheer, really providing the service for the residents of Scampi.
I know we had a lot of concern with bombers, the San Diego event in terms of the time it ended. So do we want to again have them end it earlier, just folks in the hotel?
Well, at least the music, the music.
Yeah.
The noise ordinance is 11:00 PM. Usually if the music is off by 11:00 PM, there is an issue, an issue with the...
Yeah, this legislation request has to one, so it could just be changed from 9:00 to 11:00. Yeah. I would just remark with that, just to amend it. So instead of 9:00 to 1:00, 9:00 to 11:00. You got people in the hotel across the street.
Yeah.
Open container issue or is it music?
Well, normally we'd be allowing them to continue to serve till 1:00, but we'd make them stop to use that at 11:00. And that way, if the noise isn't there, what they're usually, their issue is noise. So just shut the stereo off at 11:00 PM, but allow them to continue to have fun until 1:00. It really doesn't create issues if people can't work with it. They go through a pretty significant expense to put these events on in two hours. It really makes it too well.
And you're putting 11:00 on.
And again, if you force them to shut their music off at 11:00, it pretty much appeases the interest that are concerned by those.
Okay, so that's separate one, we just ask them to...
I'll put it right in the legislation.
Okay, because this legislation covers all of it, so it's going to have to be really specific that music can end at 11:00 and then the drinking can go on.
But you can apply all the...
They can say absolutely.
Yes. Okay, I'll make a motion with amendment 11:00. Okay, I'll second that, all in favor? Aye. And then breakfast after the event, Little Italy Festival. At 9:00. So, okay, move it. I'll second it, all in favor? Aye. Okay, historical marker for Christmas pharmacy, this is the one.
There's a series of emails of your packet of Andrew Conti. His grandfather ran, ran a drugstore, a pharmacy over on Union Street. One of them, I guess, from the original. My understanding is that it is, when it closed down, it was the longest operated drugstore in the city of Scampi. He's looking for an historical marker. We really don't have a process with the city or a point person to do anything on this. The state used to furnish historical markers, they've gone out of the business. And this gentleman is looking for the information, or rather for permission, to place a historical marker. Since this process began, he's submitted several articles that were printed over the years from the Gazette. He's also checked with the Historic Society and they verified his claims. He also said that the current owner of the, of the building is in favor of having a marker outside of the establishment. He has no objection to it. So really, I don't know what, what council would consider, whether they would consider approving this or whether they would consider establishing a process to approve historical markers within the city.
What do we do, or do you know what we did across the street with Marcia and Wardmore in terms of the...
Yeah, she submitted a request to the city and they approved it.
It didn't come through us though.
No, it was...
They purchased the marker and they put it up for me?
Right, and it didn't come through the city council.
And where it was put, there is, there was not underground utility concerns. One of the issues is you want to be aware of is in the right way. If it's going to be placed in the right way, there may be, there may be some issues depending on...
He just wants a plaque?
The location of it. I mean, better to fix the plaque to the building.
No, not on the building. They're looking to put it in the right way.
Oh, do they?
Yes.
That may be problematic depending on what is there. Because if we have to perform work there, we'll have to remove it next week. So...
A request did go upstairs to see if a removal was required and he was told no.
You know, I think the legal process, right? Kind of thing, you know, fast forward, you know, everybody wants a historical marker and not fix the building. And then, you know, every single building in the street has some type of historical significance. And if you had a marker in front of your building, there'd be a lot of, you know, difficulty to have it sidewalk. You know, not that everyone's going to have one, but you say, what if everybody in the industry wanted one in the right way in front of the building? You know, we'd have to look at that and say, either go there somewhere and limit it or determine what is historic enough. Or like Carl also said, that's a building because then there's less chance of vandalism and getting knocked down by a steel plow and, you know, getting it away, someone tripping over it. You know, there's, there's a lot of things we can turn. So I think putting in a building would be the preferential way to do it. And if that can't be done for some reason, we have to let it away. You'd have some mechanism to say, you know, is it, is it going to be a problem?
And we already do because it's already been done. And really, it's not anything that ever came before the council before. Really, I think the law department. Yeah, I'm not sure what the mechanism is for across the street. The marker lives there for the church, but I can tell you that it never came through the council.
I know, I have no recollection of any of them going through a lot of part. So...
It went from someplace because somebody gave you...
I remember from years ago when I was in private practice, there was an application to the state and they approved it. Now, but obviously they couldn't approve the replacement of a sign in the right way. But to get the historical...
Is it the state registered historical places? So what designation do you want? Do you want a city designation? Do you want a state or do you want a national historical?
That's a different call.
Mary, I just want to tell Marcia how that all happened. But Carl, you're saying that if it's in the right way, you have to look at it and make sure it's not...
There's certain issues you want to be aware of, like if it's tall enough for somebody to put their head on it that it's put in an area that does not have utilities that already have issues. You've got to mount it and fix it to the sidewalk. You can use thunderstubs to do that so that it can't, you know, it can't be knocked over. You have some, you can't put it in front of a pathway, obviously. There are certain places where it may be able to go and other places where it would be more problematic.
All right, I'll let Marcia more than she can personally and see how they, what the promise was that she used.
If it were approved, John Poligio said that he would place it. So I have so many to go.
Yeah, he knows all of it.
Everything I have, yes. Your, I'm sorry, what?
I'm also wondering, we could also ask city staff, you know, one of the city staff meetings to kind of look at this and figure out, okay, where should an application go and, you know... Oh, I'm sorry, Steve.
It's going to sound kind of silly since it's a historic marker, but it's in at the historic district. We might want to ask the Historic Commission as well, get their feedback on it. I mean, in Newport, wherever a building is historic, they're all on buildings.
I put a question to them, they said it would be something that would be understood.
Okay. We should ask them.
Pardon?
We should ask anybody. Ask the Historic Commission.
I did, I asked them.
But they said they wouldn't do it even if you asked them to do it?
Yes, that...
I asked them to take the lead on it. I felt that they, that would be the logical place for an approval process to be taken care of.
Junk would show you.
Oh, okay, no. Okay, so that, for the summer, two more weeks. Okay, two other additional items that we've got here. One is recognition for the cleanup in Northside. Is there some, yes for that?
I need information to get this started.
Okay.
Can I question you? There's a lot of larger volunteer that we've got a lot of... Great for the open house.
So I make a motion to approve that. Okay, second, all in favor? Aye. Do we want to do a recognition from that Pleasant? Because they haven't... Did they have it?
Well, that, do we want to wait a little bit? Because they got a couple more things they're going on, like maybe to a couple of weeks. Because they got a couple more things that they're doing all the way through the month of May. They probably do it after, you know, they've completed their cycle. Because they're, they have a pretty organized effort going on. effort going on out there.
Okay, good, all right. The other issue concerns the bar meeting, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Winkler to address that.
We're meeting today concerning the grievance day. And the state had issued the fourth Tuesday in May is when you have your full day and your half issue the next day. It just so happens it's the same day, because the council will be, because of.
Tomorrow.
So we were wondering if the council would entertain moving to Wednesday versus Tuesday and keeping the Tuesday all day up to eight o'clock and Wednesday more, probably part of the day for the grievance day. So it means asking council to move their day from Tuesday, twenty eighth to Wednesday, twenty ninth.
Timing is fine in terms of informing the public and stuff. That would be my only concern, to make sure that we gave them the sound time.
We're both.
Okay, all right, so we will.
An addition to polishing, it would probably be a good idea at the next meeting, just making an announcement. On the.
So somebody will mind.
We may pass it through today or.
Do we need actually formally through this? No, no.
Change the date of the council.
Right.
We pass.
At least put it on the agenda.
The schedule, the council meeting schedule was passed, right? In a year, we pass the schedule.
Yep.
I think it's.
We publish our schedule.
Yeah, we know, yes, it's good. Any special meetings during the year for the building law? And actually, I mean, there's a lot of times, it's just to notify the public as soon as practical. And this is, I'm with my three weeks here.
Okay, so if there's nothing else to come before city development planning, I'll give a motion to adjourn. I'll second that, all in favor, aye. Okay, so the agenda is the state and Roth, who are, do you have, Mr. Winkler?
Both, that one and the next one, there's a contract association, you see, different sections.
Okay, so do they have a planning center just before plans?
Yeah.
Okay, how about number three?
That is also a contract, so I think should be consulted.
All right, how about summer paving projects, Mr. Here, Carl?
I don't, I started asking questions about it, but the city engineer was, had his list of properties and he was able to explain how it was, but I'm not sure.
He said, he said the email said he wouldn't even make it tonight, so that.
I could discuss that with him if you like.
Carl, I sent him the.
You have a question?
I would be happy to answer them, but I don't know if it's actually. Just the streets.
I have a copy.
I think one of my email, at least I did, I asked some questions.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't need another copy, I mean, if everyone else already needs a copy.
No, is this something that's here for discussion, or is this something that needs to be voted out?
I'm assuming we want to, this is what they proposed, and so we're, vote on.
I'm not.
If we're voting on this, this is, I don't want, until we actually, our bids are out, until we're awarded.
So it's just an FYI heads up?
Just an FYI to the council that these are the streets that we're going to be doing with the technique and how they're paid for.
Okay, good. All right, number five, board residency. What, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It was communicated to the engineer that he wanted to discuss last year's program because there was problems with the program, and those were the questions that were with you most.
Right, yeah, Chris had responded back, okay, so this is the thing that kind of made, you know, a couple of knowledge here. So there were some complaints about the road service in last year's not being sufficient, some cracks and peeling and things like that, the manhole not being leveled to the surface, creating, you know, garbage potholes and everything. And so Chris had replied back to everybody on the email chain, saying that the companies have come in to look at it, and whether there are areas that need to be fixed, they will hopefully rectify the situation. And I'm not sure specifically what it will do, but next year, I think it's just a matter of getting the manhole adjusted prior to the re- made it, right?
Is there a reason they're not raised first before the project's done?
Depends on the size of the manholes, what's the inventory, there's a lot of, it depends. There are grid manhole versus a cement manhole versus a Horizon manhole, there's a lot of irons in our street that need required to be adjusted. Sometimes they can be adjusted with rings, sometimes they can't, there's odd shaped manholes, they don't make rings for the longer, so it's a kind of case by case basis.
But when the projects bid out or whatever, do you know, do you know how many manholes are there? And what kind they are?
Yes.
I mean, I guess the question is, and I had it posed to me by quite a few people, is, you know, the problems with the paving sometimes is the depths where the manholes are.
You can't make them flush, you have to have them process a little, or we'll hit them with our plows and break the irons.
Yeah.
But we will do the best that we can to see, make the road surfaces as smooth as possible, obviously, and sometimes afterwards, the structure itself, so the manhole structure, so it's nothing to do with the road surface, but those manhole structures will be very.
But sometimes when that's done afterwards, the patch fails around there.
It also depends on if you're doing a mill fill or you're doing recycled asphalt, there's different, there's different techniques associated, depending on how much of the road surface you're removing before you replace it.
Government's order.
We are, and we try to make them as smooth as possible, but still allow it to function so we can maintain the street better. And if a contractor doesn't do the job appropriately, we do have a percentage that we hold back, and we have a one-year warranty on the product. So any issues that may occur, we hold them to it and cover it back with this.
Okay, any further? All right, thank you. Looks like there's just one board residency appointment, correct? And that's Tom Delisal, my understanding is we really have the show. Positions aren't there, so again, then you have some people that recommend that. Now, board residency. So are we, is that the firm I should to appoint Tom Delisal?
Right.
Tonight, the board residency.
Yeah.
Well, there is some other people, I submitted two names to show, so people that are interested in serving on boards.
Okay, are there still openings?
Yes.
For there are, it was, the two, they, they said that it was Martha and.
Martha and Ariana.
Yeah.
So Tom tonight, and then all of these other vacancies have already happened, the locations are.
I've got one resignation, well, actually, the vacancies occur, it's only one year appointment, it's a year to year on board residency. And there are two designated openings, one person would work for the city, you gotta move down.
All right, well, unless there's any objections, let's appoint Tom Delisal tonight, in two weeks, we'll take a look at those other folks. Who's in government? You and Carl. Move that.
So.
Second, all in favor, aye. All right, unless there's nothing else to come before the government ops.
Are the circles moved?
The, John said those were three items, because they're contracts. So, actually, move that to recess.
Recession, that's moved.
Okay. All right, we're in recess. Okay, cost for public service utilities, and are you gonna do the first three?
Yeah.
We have a local permit for the auto, forty six, forty eight, R.J. Street, it's been approved by the commission, and the engineering department for a sign, it's a, or a, or a sign that hangs over here right left.
Forty six, forty eight. What's a standard size?
There's a sign ordinance that regulates sizes for a.
Yeah, there's no standard size, there's a maximum of five feet that it can be away from the building. The size is dependent on a number of things, the width of the building, and how many other signs in there, oh, signage for that building, that is well within.
Any questions? I'll take a motion. This is, this, and, and he studies those, so I, you, so. Yeah.
Do we have a motion?
Uh, all right.
Good question, sorry.
I'll second, all in favor. Okay, so we both agree with the damn sign?
Actually, this is for the awning. The sign was passed by council a few weeks ago, and they wanted to include an awning, we wanted to include it in their goal of, as a part.
Okay, so we approved the cement already, I mean, the sign already, now they want to add an awning?
Yeah, for the windows. And again, it's supposed to be approved by the planning commission and.
Any questions? Second, all in favor. Okay, pretty convenient program from DSI.
I do not have the permission.
That means discussion.
Oh.
D.I.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Sorry, they're.
Did you say for that? That was actually, I think, what we already talked about, so.
I'll go to the first.
Sounds good. Probably the top finding, so. So we're discussing that.
Yeah.
And A.D.A.C. fuel management to Mr. Olson?
Yes. We issued specifications for a fuel management system that has Euro service. This is a wireless data collection system that measures the amount of fuel that's in the tank. We are required to do reconciliation reports to New York City E.C. once every ten days. What they're looking for is how much fuel did you start with, how much fuel did you get in deliveries, how much fuel did you use to each vehicle, and how much space left in the tank. By doing that every ten days, we add certainty that the tanks are not leaking.
So it's. We'd cycle that.
Well, we like to see who's using it, and our own reporting purposes, but the state's very concerned that the tanks are leaking, which is actually, it's a mandate, it's a lot of work on our end, but it protects us, because if they're ever leaky, you can notice it right away and be able to do something about it. Again, this is a wireless data collection system that we now use to do reconciliation reports every ten days for the states, but it also enables us to track the usage of what we all for city vehicles a little bit more, you know, quicker and a little more efficient, you know, than we currently have to keep going all the day now.
And now we get to do that?
We have one. We had five people pick it up, I believe, when I did that, and we only had one.
And one did.
It was, we actually anticipated this to be about twenty thousand dollars, so we were pleased to see them coming in at fifteen, five hundred.
Oh, let's see, this is connected, isn't it?
I believe so, I think it was.
Were you connected?
My only concern, I mean, when there's five companies that make this type of product that only one did, you know, makes you feel, I have looked into the business application, but again, it needs to be driven broad enough so that all the manufacturers in the arena can participate. And so, especially in economy, it's not companies that say, oh, yeah, we make that, but I'm not gonna bother bidding on it, it just means that, you know, everyone else didn't meet the spec because.
We wanted to be able to solicit vendors, and actually spoke to John Winkler on why we didn't get this.
Well, this, and what I can say right now, we are including, going to the other, you said there were five total picked up?
Four or five.
Well, now, maybe we'll get one on bid now, I'm sorry.
We got allowed an estimate at this juncture, why didn't we bid, what was wrong, whatever. The only way we could do that is if we were to jet all of it, and then you could do, you know, polling, trying to have what was right, what was wrong, where the specifications were written, why not be interested, and then decide whether or not you want to make changes, and if you do, you make the changes and send it out to bid again. But right now, it would be improper before the awarder bid to go out and do any polling. If you were to award a bid, and they just wanted general information for future news, after the bid was awarded, then you could go out and do another poll. But you can't do it while the bid is pending.
Oh, well, we had said before, several months ago, that we were wanting to be doing something like that, that when, you know, we got bids in and we only got one person to bid, there was a form that was created, that we would ask the people who picked up the spec, why they didn't bid. Are we doing that?
Yes, we provide them with surveys, we've never gotten any.
I think just from a bidder's perspective, you know, they get the documentation, they open it up, and they can quickly look at it and say, yeah, we can do that, or we can't do that. And if they can't, it's not gonna waste another second, we may have labor time repairing for it, or arguing about it, or calling up, hey, how come, you know, you're asking for Phillips head screws, and you know I own a flathead screw, it's my, now my part, so it's, it's not, I don't expect the company to provide us feedback while they're, because they're taking money, custom money, time later to do that. Writing a bid specification is the hardest part, to make sure that your spec is driven broad enough that it comes consistent to allow anybody to calculate, and they can do that. We talked about gear ratios on an axle, you know, it's very particular of a brand, you know, things like that, so that's kind of where we struggle, I think everybody does, it's hard, you know, this is not a due dollar, you know, you have hundreds of thousands or hundred and fifty grand, but it would be nice to have, you know, there are more than one company that has to provide this technology, you know.
I think part of the problem is writing the spec itself, and having the expertise to be able to write it open enough, but yet serve a particular need, a little fifteen thousand dollars, it doesn't really pay us a higher up consultant that is an expert in the area to write, or supposedly an expert in the area, to write the specification for, so it would cost us as much for the professional services that did for the product.
Challenge, challenge.
Yeah. This is why when we have large ticket items, we do like to go to professional services and higher firms that are, are very well versed in that particular discipline.
Do you have a state contract with this?
And it is critically important that I do file that reconciliation report every now, exactly, we've been having some issued polling data, which is what the girl does, and again, that is a responsibility that we have to meet for our own.
Any other questions? I'll second, all in favor. Anything else to come before public service services? Anything to return? Okay, all in favor, we're determined.
Three opening government ops or? Or anything, maybe.
Was anything claimed, solved executive section?
Yeah, and then we did the.
Took up an option. Some of them.
Sure, I agree.
Three seconds.
Before we go to the session, just like the talking man.
Okay. Oh, okay.